We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome H. Dwayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Ali.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
And Councilmember Ruckregel. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We have several proclamations this evening. We're going to start with the 50th anniversary of the IHSA State Cross Country Finals. Whereas today we celebrate the remarkable achievement of hosting the IHSA State Cross Country Finals for the past 50 years in Peoria. And whereas for over five decades we've seen thousands of student athletes as they have pushed themselves to new success under the watchful eyes of caring and expert coaches. And whereas an event of this magnitude is successful because of the efforts of everyone involved, we thank the Peoria High School staff, faculty, administration, athletic teams, music department, cheerleaders, and parents who have been pivotal in the successful hosting of the IHSA State Cross Country Meet. And whereas we also thank the dedication of the young people who have made up the cross-country program for over 50 years, for they accomplished the staggering task of conducting and tearing down the state meet every venue, every year. And whereas this event has not only generated millions of dollars from attendees from around the state, it's also provided us with the opportunity to showcase our city and our offerings for these families when they visit year after year. Whereas they have an abundance of sponsors from the area, public schools, park districts, and all other businesses in between, including the Peoria Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Illinois Valley Striders. Now therefore I Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria do hereby acknowledge the 50th anniversary of the IHSA State Cross Country Finals in Peoria, Illinois. Brian Dunphy's here. He's the administrator or the athletic director at Peoria High School. He has been working on this a lot over the years, and he'd also like to give us some additional information, right Brian?
Thank you, very welcome. Also welcome my assistant Sean Steever. Sean works for the district as well. Fifty years of cross-country, that equals 1,200 gallons of field paint, 10,000 rolls of toilet paper, 20,000 fence posts, 80,000 zip ties, and all that work is done by Peoria High cross-country athletes. They handle supervising all this fence, miles of fence put up, taken down, fence posts in and out. They get in really good shape in November. We handle all the parking, supervising all of the crowd control. We've removed a ton of walnuts from the course, dog patrol, drones, bees, you name it, we've done it. We handle all the concessions. All these things are handled by Peoria High students. It's really something to be proud of. Like to thank the council, Mayor Artis, always supportive, always attentive to our needs. It's a monumental task, and just about everyone in the city has a piece of it. Thank you all very much.
Once again, thank you for this proclamation, and I've been down there volunteering. I ran for Peoria High in '75 and '76, and started volunteering in '77, and I guess the summation is I've gotten a lot more out of this meet than I've put into it. Thank you.
Next we have the 25th anniversary of Samaritan Ministries. Whereas in October of 1994 Ted and Sheri Pittenger were convinced that the concept of healthcare sharing, Christians directly sharing with one another to assist with extraordinary medical expenses and providing encouragement with prayer and notes, deserved broader participation among American Christians. And whereas by 2019, more than 82,000 families and 270,000 individuals participate in the healthcare sharing ministry of Samaritan Ministries International. And whereas the ministry has grown from employing just three employees in the early years to nearly 400 individuals now working in two locations in Peoria. And whereas for 25 years Samaritan Ministries International continues to offer this ministry to Christian members in the United States and around the world. Now therefore I Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria do hereby recognize the 25th anniversary of Samaritan Ministries International in Peoria, Illinois. We'd like to invite Mr. Pittenger to say a few words for us as well.
Don't have really a lot to say. We spent about 12 years on the other side of the river, but been here in Peoria for 13, and we enjoy it, continue to grow, have two buildings. I don't know, we're looking at maybe needing a third one, so looking for that. Thanks.
Next we have the citywide celebration of women in the arts. Stacy Peterson accepting in lieu of...yeah, come on down. We'll call out Kristen McKenzie, who's the Director of the Illinois Women Artists Project who you're standing in for. Whereas the citywide celebration of women in the arts, an initiative of Arts Partners of Central Illinois, will be held throughout the community at galleries, studios, churches, and other organizations during November. And whereas the citywide celebration of women in the arts will not only feature exhibits and demonstrations, but also musical events, literary readings, theater performances, and opportunities to learn from the women who create in our community and beyond. And whereas the citywide celebration of women in the arts commemorates the achievements of all creative women, pays tribute to their bodies of work, and applauds their ability to inspire future generations of artists. Now therefore I Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria do hereby acknowledge the month of November as the citywide celebration of women in the arts in Peoria, Illinois. So Stacy's not only our communications director, but she's also very active in the arts. I believe you sit on the board for Arts Partners as well, so she's very appropriate to accept this on behalf of women in the arts, and if you'd like to say a few words, we'd like to hear them.
Thank you, I will. Thank you Mayor Artis. Thank you Mayor Artis, and thank you City Council for this honor of receiving a proclamation on behalf of Kristen McKenzie and all the work that she's done with the citywide celebration. The citywide celebration of the arts is going to be a really incredible event during the entire month of November. In all different art venues throughout our city, you're going to be able to see all kinds of mediums, but from women all over the United States, but primarily focused here in Illinois. Starting the first weekend in November at the Peoria Art Guild, there will be an all-female iron pour that you will not want to miss. It's the first time this pour has ever been done within the city of Peoria. And if you go to artspartners.net, you'll be able to see a full schedule of the month's events. Also, the one big event that'll be starting the first weekend of November will be the Symposium held at Bradley University. And Kristen McKenzie works very, very hard finding speakers and appropriate materials to kick off the celebration of women in the arts. So, thank you very much. Hope you get a chance to take part in some of these events.
Next, the 100th season of Peoria Players Theater. Whereas Peoria Players Theater originated on October the 6th, 1919 with a one-act play by Oliphant Down entitled "The Maker of Dreams" and has been in continuous operation since. As the nation's fourth-longest continuously-running community theater and the longest in the state of Illinois, they've entertained audiences with plays like Fiddler on the Roof, Ragtime, White Christmas, Oklahoma, and Annie. And whereas since their beginning 100 years ago, they encountered many obstacles: a depression, a freeway, not to mention moving from venue to venue. Former locations of the theater include the Peoria Women's Club, the Majestic Theater, and the old Jackson Street Firehouse. The Firehouse remained home to Peoria players until 1955, when the construction of I-74 ran through the back property, taking the stage house and the workshop with it. And whereas their current home, designed by local architect Leslie Kenyon and located at the corner of Lakin University, opened on November 30th, 1957. And whereas Peoria Players Theater produces quality theatrical entertainment, provides a creative outlet for local talent, and creates hands-on learning experiences for onstage and backstage volunteers. And whereas they produce nine shows a year, including musicals, a holiday production, drama, and comedies, in addition to the summer youth theater in August. Now therefore I Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria, Illinois do hereby recognize the 100th season of Peoria Players Theater in Peoria, Illinois. Nikki Hashkey's going to give us a little more information. Nikki?
Thank you to Mayor Artis and the Peoria City Council for this great honor and for your support. We are very proud to have celebrated 100 years of playing in Peoria. Our history and longevity is definitely due to the wonderful people of this community, and we are already full steam ahead, three shows into our 101st season. As Mayor Artis said, you can find us at the corner of Lakin University in Lakeview Park. Please check us out, peoriaplayers.org. Thank you again.
Another 100th year anniversary. This is for the Peoria Area Association of Realtors. I believe Councilman Euler is going to join me on this one. Whereas the Peoria Area Association of Realtors was formed on January 1st, 1920, and is an important and longtime promoter of Peoria's community values and image. And whereas the organization works with local, state, and federal government leaders to support homeowners' rights. And whereas the organization maintains a strong bond with local businesses and citizens to help the city thrive. Now therefore I Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria do hereby acknowledge January the 1st, 2020, as the 100th anniversary of the Peoria Area Association of Realtors in Peoria, Illinois. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Euler, who is also a Realtor and very active in the association. Councilman?
Thank you. It's a great opportunity to honor an organization that literally sells Peoria on a daily basis. And as an elected body, it's critically important for us to understand the needs of our constituents and our business owners. And the Realtors Association is literally, in my opinion, one of the closest organizations to that block of people, because they interact with them every day and understand why people choose to live in our community and the things that we need to do better to keep people and keep businesses in our community and to continue to move our community forward. And so it's great to have everyone here to recognize 100 years of an organization that does a lot for this community. And I'll introduce Kendra Sykes, the Peoria Area Association of Realtors President.
Thanks Zach. I don't think I can add much more to that. We're very proud of our history here in Peoria and our association of helping individuals achieve the American dream of homeownership. Like Zach said, we're advocates for Peoria in addition to helping protect those private property rights. We're excited and look forward to continuing on and promoting the city of Peoria and the entire region. Thank you.
And now we would like to ask Ambassador Elena Teplitz to come forward and hopefully have her family join her. Councilman Grab is going to join me for this as well. Whereas Ambassador Elena B. Teplitz began her service to the United States when she joined the State Department in 1991, following her graduation from Georgetown University's School of Foreign Service. Her first overseas assignment was as the First Economic Officer in the U.S. Embassy in Mongolia. And whereas due to her hard work, dedication, and patriotism to her country, Ambassador Teplitz worked in many different roles, including serving as the Director of Management Training Division at the State Department's Foreign Service Institute, as well as the Deputy Executive Director of the Near East and South and Central Asia Bureau's Joint Executive Office overseeing South and Central Asia, including Pakistan and Afghanistan. She also served as the Director of the Under Secretary for Management's Office of Policy, Right-Sizing, and Innovation at the Department of State, where she worked with information technology to improve diplomatic service. She also served as the U.S. Ambassador to Nepal before her current position. And where she is a career member of the Senior Foreign Service with the rank of Minister Counselor, and has also served in Tirana, Belgium, and Bangladesh. And whereas on October 22nd, 2018, due to her wealth of expertise and proven service, Ms. Teplitz was sworn in as Ambassador to Sri Lanka and Maldives. And whereas tonight, we honor her service and her accomplishments for the betterment of the United States of America, now therefore I Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria do hereby recognize and thank Elena B. Teplitz in Peoria, Illinois. First I want to thank Councilman Grab, who brought this proclamation to our attention this evening and really allowed us an opportunity to recognize and thank Ms. Teplitz while she was in town, which is very important for us. It's also important for us to recognize her father Jack, who worked in the administration here at City Hall for a long time, is still a well-known attorney that does a lot of work in the community. And also Marcella, who was a former colleague of ours on the Peoria City Council. But it really does add another really important name to a list of very prominent Peorians that have gone on to represent our community well, and really spread the message about hometown being Peoria, Illinois, and the wonderful products that come out of our community. So we thank her for her service to our country. We thank her for taking a few minutes to come in this evening for us to recognize her, for her many accomplishments. I'd like to ask Councilman Grab to say a couple few words before we ask Elena to. Thank you. Oh, I might also mention that her husband didn't get any mention in this proclamation, but also was a very distinguished and recognized Marine in our armed forces. So, thank you to him for his service to our country as well.
Elena, we are delighted to have you here. We know how important the State Department is for our country, and how important your work is. And you've had many assignments, and I recall when you were the Ambassador to Nepal and they had terrible earthquake. And now the Ambassador to Sri Lanka and Maldives, a very challenging assignment, as some of the events of the past few months have shown. But I want, from a personal standpoint, to let you know how proud Councilwoman Teplitz is of you, and how proud Esquire Jack B. Teplitz, your father, is of you. And because of them, I found out what it meant to be an F.O.A.
Yes.
And Jack, why don't you make a few comments about your daughter, and then let her say some things. Please come on up.
Oh no.
Proud father. Have been proud of her career. She has gone all over the world, and in order for me to see her, I've gone all over the world, to places that I never thought or expected to go to. But the biggest thing I got out of it, in addition to seeing my daughter, was meeting the people in the Foreign Service. And recognizing how dedicated they are. Excuse me. How much they give up, because they're posted every two or three years someplace else. They have families, they all pick up and move, they all step forward, and they're nonpartisan. Elena's worked for Republicans Presidents and Democratic Presidents. And all of them, they're the President. They set the policy. You move the country forward. But it is all the desire of being a patriot to set forth, they're representing the United States. And whether it's in situations where we don't like to talk about, she served a year in Afghanistan, or other places where you kind of have to shut it off. The difference between her being in Afghanistan and the military, is she doesn't carry a weapon, but she's there. And she's willing to serve. And so, that's what I'm extremely proud of, is her career to represent the United States and all of us throughout the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilman, I appreciate the individual honor of this proclamation, but also the support for my team, who is in Colombo, Sri Lanka, right now, and all of the hard work that they do on behalf of the American people. In fact, one of our first and primary obligations is to support American citizens. We manage small things like issuing passports and reports of birth abroad. We also help citizens who are detained. We help citizens who meet with other unfortunate circumstances. But we are there as representatives of the American people, not only to address policy issues and advance our national security, but to help the traveling public. And I have a team that works very hard on this, most recently after terror attacks last Easter in Colombo, where of course we lost five Americans. So, it's a great honor to be before you today, and of course I appreciate the support of my family and of communities like Peoria. What that means, I think, for us serving abroad is huge, but also it's a fine representation of our country. Thank you.
Councilman Seer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting held on October 15th, 2019, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any changes or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Our first item of business is a public hearing, 19-320, is a public hearing regarding the proposed 2021 City of Peoria Biennial Budget.
We have a motion to open the public hearing by Councilmember Moore, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Seeing no objections, please cast your ballots to open the public hearing. The motion passes unanimously. The public
The public hearing is now open. Anyone who would like to address the city council regarding the City of Peoria Biennial Budget, first call. Name and for the record, please.
My name is Michael Freylinger, and I reside at 3300 North Elmcoff Terrace. I am here representing the Downtown Development Corporation. I'm their current President and CEO. I'd like to acknowledge that not only Councilwoman Moore is a board member of mine, but in the audience is our Vice Chair, Jeff Kolbus, who represents the Peoria Area Association of Realtors on our Board of Directors. Very briefly, we would like to thank you for the support that you've given to the DDC in the past, and we would also like to request that your support of the Downtown Development Corporation, the DDC, continue in the 2021 Biannual Budget. I did provide some information to the Mayor and Councilmembers, City Manager, regarding some of our activities and the accomplishments that we've contributed to over the past few years, as well as some letters of support. We would ask that you give this consideration from the council. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council regarding the City of Peoria Biennial
Thank you, Mayor Artis, and members of the City Council, for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of the Peoria Area Association of Realtors. My name is Kendra Sipes, and I'm a proud member of PAR, which is, as we celebrated earlier this evening, been selling Peoria for over 100 years. PAR has over 850 members, with well over 200 members living within the City of Peoria. I'm here speaking behalf of PAR, along with a dozen or so Realtors that are with me here this evening. As you continue discussions regarding the City of Peoria's budget, we appreciate this opportunity to again advocate for property owners within the City of Peoria, and we caution you against imposing any additional increases in the property tax rate which they pay. We know it has been the stated will of this council to not increase property taxes, but we also know you are in early process of the budget, and a variety of proposals have yet to be presented for your consideration. We're all aware that property taxes are a huge issue for our region. This is an increasingly difficult discussion Realtors have almost daily. We're often challenged with not only selling a property, but with selling the property taxes. Sadly, the monthly amount of property taxes often equals the amount they'll spend on the principal and interest, if not sometimes more. We believe it's imperative to find an additional source of revenue other than property and sales taxes to help fund city and county services. We recognize the challenges municipalities and schools have with balancing their budgets, especially when facing the unfunded state mandates. This is a message we are sharing with all taxing bodies, not just the City of Peoria as it affects taxes. We believe it's imperative, all viable options are considered for generating new sources of revenue. There's an ongoing struggle to balance budgets, often resulting in placing an additional burden on our residents by raising property and sales tax, creating new fees or assessments, or sometimes all of the above. Realtors urge all levels of government to recognize the importance a sound and dynamic real estate market means to the community. Understanding excessive taxes and fees have a direct impact on buyers' decisions, both residential and commercial. I'd like to provide a suggestion pertaining to the proposed fee and registration on foreclosed properties discussed by this council last week. We'd be more than happy to work with the council and staff to address items or concerns that may be part of such a fee registration program. A few items such as: the property registration program should only apply to properties that are legally foreclosed upon; the registry program should not apply to properties that are in pre-foreclosure; the registry program should not apply to properties where there are occupants still residing; the registration fee should be assessed on the foreclosing entity. In conclusion, Realtors are involved in and support their communities. PAR has been involved in the Downtown Development Council and Warehouse District, both financially and through our volunteer efforts, for a number of years. This initiative is a great example of promoting growth and walkability in Peoria. We appreciate the tough budget decisions you as a council have to make. We're eager to be a positive contributor, to work with you through collaborative efforts, because we want as best for property owners and our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council regarding the City of Peoria Biennial Budget? Last call. Seeing none, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Councilman Grab, seconded by Councilman Rigenbach. Seeing no objections, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at the consent agenda. 19-321 is a communication from the City Manager, Public Works Director, Fire Chief, and Finance Director with a request to approve and execute a contract with Hare Petroleum Oil for large loads, and Aglan FS for small loads, for a two-year contract to purchase fuel, as outlined over the low rack price from the Daily Opus Report, plus freight. And then 19-322 is a request to approve the site application for a Class B restaurant 50% food liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol at Rudy's Mexican Cantina and Grill Incorporated DBA, the same name, at 3311 North Sterling Avenue, Suite 20, contingent upon issuance of all appropriate permits and a certificate of occupancy with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. 19-323 is a request to receive and file the recommendation for a 2020 tax levy from the Fireman's Pension Fund Board of Trustees in the amount of $13,540,45. 19-324 is a request from the Peoria Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees recommending a 2020 tax levy in the amount of $14,696,943 with a request to receive and file. 19-325 is a request to receive and file the municipal compliance report for the Fireman's Pension Fund Board of Trustees. And 19-326 is a request from the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees regarding their municipal compliance report, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to remove from consent this evening? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. Councilman Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, could we remove 19-325, please?
325? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 19-322?
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilman Grab. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
19-322 is the request to approve the site application for Rudy's Mexican Cantina and Grill at 3311 North Sterling Avenue.
Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am very happy and excited and welcome a new Mexican, authentic Mexican restaurant to the 4th District located at Sterling Bazaar. For those of you who don't know where that's at, that's by the Krogers or the DMV. And the name of the restaurant, once again, is Rudy's Mexican Cantina and Grill. I'd like to make a motion to approve this Class B liquor license.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. And the motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
19-325 is a request to receive and file the municipal compliance report for the Fireman's Pension Fund Board of Trustees.
Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question would go for the police as well. We have a fair discrepancy between what the Department of Insurance says we ought to set aside this year and what our actuaries ask us to set aside. I don't have any particular preference, one way or the other, but it's a fairly good gap, and I wonder if the manager, or perhaps the treasurer, could give us a little bit of background on the differential between these two numbers.
Sure, be happy to, Councilman. Two things. One, the City of Peoria in the last five, six years has followed the Illinois Department of Revenue's actuary versus the pension funds. There's several differences between the two. One, the pension fund recommends 100% funding. The pension that the city follows is at 90%, based on the state statute that we have to be funded by 2040. The other issue is that the pension fund uses the public safety mortality table versus the city uses the modified 2014 blue collar mortality table. And then, and we can talk a little bit about that. We have found out that public safety officers live longer than blue collar workers, and so therefore, they have a higher liability. So you begin to see that disperse being greater on one versus the other, as well as the 100% funding versus 90%. And the other major one is that the pension fund uses 6.75% versus the Illinois Department of Revenue uses 6.5%. So it's about a quarter of a point there. The biggest issue, when you look at the 90% versus 100%, is the fact that something that we've talked about around this group and have spoken to it through our legislature is that you have a 2040 ramp. So in spite of what Springfield may do in any kind of law change, that ramp is going to continue to be there unless the law is changed. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about a potential bill that will be coming out of the legislature, but it's my understanding that that ramp is still going to be there. And so, we should not anticipate that our funding level is going to be decreasing in the future unless that ramp is changed, because we are the only closed system when it comes to public pensions in the United States. And that's a huge issue, and that ramp will continue to be there unless the legislature chooses to modify that ramp and go to an open amortization like they do in the private sector, as well as other public sectors throughout the United States.
Thank you, Mr. Nickteen. Your explanation was, as far as I'm concerned, quite satisfactory. And once again, I don't have a problem with it, but what do we pay our actuaries?
The one from the Illinois Department of Revenue is paid for...
Pardon me? I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
The one that's provided to the city by the Illinois Department of Revenue, we pay for via an $8,000 annual payment to the State of Illinois. The pension fund pays approximately $7,000 to the private actuary.
Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I would like to move approval on this item.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Grab. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at a first reading. 19-327 is a request for a first reading review of an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Peoria relating to registration of residential property and inspection of dwellings. And on your desk, on yellow paper, is a replacement council communication.
Thank you. Director Black.
Thank you, Mayor. First, just for clarification, on the yellow copy on your desk, on the fourth paragraph down in the council communication, the second sentence on the original read, "A large majority of property owners did not qualify for the $75 per property rate." It should actually read, "A large majority of property owners did qualify for the $75 per property rate." That's the only change on the actual memo itself. There are three specific items on this communication, this first reading before you this evening, that have really come out of continuing productive conversations that we have been having with a group of landlords here in town. So the first requested modification is that we are now recommending that properties that are going to be used as non-owner-occupied properties be registered at the time of closing, as opposed to the current requirement where they have to be registered within 30 days of being used as a non-owner-occupied property. So that would hopefully streamline the process a little bit and make sure that we're not missing properties that are being transferred. The second change is a reduction in an existing fee. Currently, the fee for late registration, so if someone registers late, the fee is $100, yes, $100, and we are requesting that that be reduced to $50. We feel that that is more in line with the overall registration fee in terms of a total fiscal impact to the City of Peoria. Because the majority of property owners do register within time, we don't anticipate that this impact would be any more than a few thousand dollars. The final change before you this evening is to do with the self-inspection form that property owners are required to complete in concert with their tenants. We had looked at going to an electronic process using some software that we had looked at. Unfortunately, the price came back higher than anticipated, and the funds are not in the budget. As such, we are going back to the prior stance that the inspection forms are still required to be completed, but they do not have to be submitted to the city with the registration. They do need to be provided to the city upon request, and that would generally happen when there is a situation at the property where there's code violations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I would like to thank Director Black, as well as the council members in particular. I believe Councilman Euler and Jensen have been working with the landlord group, met meeting consistently for the last year or so, and that landlord group has done a good job. And this isn't the first thing they've brought forward to us, but it's definitely another one of the productive things that have come forward, thanks to that communication between the landlords and staff and council members, too. We appreciate that. I have Councilmember Ali first.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Black, can you... First of all, thank you for your good work that you're doing with the property owners. I spoke to a group just a couple weeks ago, and they bragged about the relationship that they have in communications with your department. My question is related to the buyer that purchases property. Will the closing agencies know to make the registration a part of the process, or how would they know if they're a new buyer that plans to rent?
So that would be part of the outreach and education that we would have, assuming the council passes this ordinance, that the first step would be to make sure that the closing agents in town, the real estate community in town, understood that this was in place. An associated question is what happens in a situation where somebody purchases a property and decides at some point subsequent to that purchase that they're going to use it as a non-owner-occupied property? In that case, the existing... that they're going to use it as a non-owner-occupied property? In that case, the existing standard that the property has to be registered within 30 days would remain in place. So this is really just an opportunity to try and, and reduce some paperwork, reduce some movement of paperwork by taking care of registration at the time of closing, as opposed to someone having to remember to do that afterwards.
And then what would happen if, if that did not take place at the time of closing?
So we, we currently receive, well, the treasurer's office receives notice of all property transfers, and they provide us with copies of those transfers. And that's what we're using right now to determine if a property has to be registered, and then we can, we can verify if it has been registered. So what I would tell you is that, that obviously, we're not going to, assuming council passes this, we're not going to immediately jump into an enforcement mode, that there would be several months of continuing education and outreach to make sure that everyone understands how this would work. But we would use the information that the treasurer's office receives in order to verify that registration has taken place.
Thank you.
I have Councilman Kelly next.
I'd like to second the remarks of the, of the mayor and of Councilwoman Ali. My compliments to you, Mr. Director, on your cooperation with the landlord group. Often, we hear that it's difficult to do business in Peoria. And so my antenna was up when I first read this ordinance, or this amended ordinance, and I'm, we, we're streamlining the process, it seems to me. We're streamlining it in cooperation with those folks who, in the community, who have to comply. And it, I, I think it's, kudos to you, sir, and I, I'm, I'm very happy we're taking this, making this change.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Director Black and also Assistant Director Doolin, who's back there, who's worked with us on this group for the last year. We've brought a couple of other changes forward, and I do think it's positive. We're trying to make the process more streamlined and also get more compliance, which is part of the purpose of having the registration at time of closing, because then it'll all be taken care of when they're doing all the other things that they do at closing. So we're, we're hopeful that this will assist us in getting more compliance. And I thank the staff for bringing this forward and, and the council for your support. Thank you.
I have Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. City Manager, maybe, how much money do we spend on the new financial software?
The purchase of the software last year was a little more than $2 million.
$2 million, okay. I just don't understand, and thank you, Director Black and Mr. Doolin for all your work, but we're talking about $30,000. Can we find $30,000 to be more efficient? And we're talking about innovation all the time. I'd, I'd like to challenge you guys to find $30,000 so it can be more efficient, and that, that this software, you know, we can be, be compatible to what we bought, we invested $2 million already. My understanding, it's not compatible with what we bought. Is that correct? So I'd like, I'd like to, to see if you could find $30,000 somewhere that we're short in a $218 million budget, so that we're more efficient and we keep more innovation in, right here in the city of Peoria, and maybe we can lead by example. Thank you.
Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to comment from our discussions, and we actually had our last meeting this morning, and talking about the financial impact down here that we're going to have less revenue from fines coming in. That's something that we don't talk about very often, but additionally, on a positive perspective, I think that we're going to generate much more than that $5,000 in lost revenue, and staff time that will be reduced focused on processing these is first time coming through the door approvals when they're getting run through the title company. So I think that there's several wins for us in terms of efficiency gains that will result in a financial impact. So I'd move to receive and file.
Okay, we have a motion to receive and file, seconded by Councilmember Euler, or Councilmember Jensen, I apologize. Councilman Grab?
Mr. Chairman, if our Assistant Director of Community Development could take the floor for just a second.
Clarify for Councilman Seer's comment about the difference in the pricing for the software. Last year, when we initially went and adopted this, we were looking for self-inspection software that would tie into the system. We worked with our innovation team, and, and were part of a project, and unfortunately, that's the, where the $30,000 gap is. When we budgeted last year for that software, it came in at about $60,000. And then unfortunately, when we're going through the transition process for the whole Tyler technology, it, it, stuff goes into the, you can pull stuff out of the system very well, but because it's such a large player, the compatibility isn't there for software to go in. So it is something we're going to look to continue to explore in the future of ways that we can do it a little cheaper, and maybe create something in-house with the self-inspection, so tenant and landlords can have access to the inspection form out in, in the field. We have a fellow who's working with our grants department who's done a few things. So we're, we're going to continue to explore what we can do to digitalize it, so not just the self-inspection form is available online, but it also pushes some other helpful information for tenants when they are going through the self-inspection form. So when they do click, click on something being ineffective or wrong, they get some education and some resources to connect to them as well. So we are, we will keep looking at how we can digitalize that, so people aren't messing with 8,000 forms every year as well, so.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing no lights. We have a motion to receive and file this first reading. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at Regular Business, 19-312, is a recommendation from the Construction Commission with the request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Peoria relating to air rights.
Okay, we discussed this in the first reading last week. Are there any additional questions for staff? Or a motion? Motion to approve by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
19-318 is a request to receive and file a presentation and discussion of the 2020 to 2021 biennial budget.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is no presentation tonight. We had that at our last meeting, but I do want to begin by just quickly walking through the, the budget report backs that came out of last week's meeting. We had 15 items that the council requested report backs on. In your, the handout that was given to you and that was emailed to you on Sunday includes all of those items. The first was the, the CIP by council district. That has been included in as the first report back. The second is a summary of all of the support to other agencies, be that agency, direct agency support, or whether that's redevelopment agreement support. We have the impact of the special event fees, the number of special events that we've had over the last year.
Manager, can I interrupt for a second? Maybe as we go one by one, we'll just see if there's any questions, as opposed to going all the way through and then back. Is that okay?
Perfectly fine by me.
Okay, thanks. Any questions on the CIP per district? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if there are questions more as a statement, but maybe I can ask our city manager, on page 14 of your report, I'm talking about the three-ring binder we all received. Page 14, can you walk us to the column that, the roads, for roads, please, the second column from your left?
Certainly. Hang on just a second. Yes, I can. All right. With regards to, to our, our road funding, the first line at the top in terms of sources is our current road levy. It's $1.2 million that we're estimating for 2020. The second line would be other local sources. There you see $2,91,000 of other sources. That $2 million is coming from the amount of, of money that we are transferring out of the debt service fund that's coming in, no, excuse me. That, that $2 million that we have is the local motor fuel tax proceeds that we have. The $4.5 million that follows underneath that is state sources, is the state motor fuel tax that includes a $1.4 million increase over the prior year. Then we have $2.8 million of transfers that are coming in. That includes the money from the, from the debt fund and also from the general fund of, of $800,000. So in total, in the road funds, in our state motor fuel tax fund and our local motor fuel tax fund, we have $10.6 million of revenue. In addition, we are funding roads out of other funds as well. And, and as we mentioned in the overall presentation of the budget at last week's meetings, we have closer to $15 million of road funding in this budget for this coming year. We have monies that we're receiving from the state and federal governments for road projects. In the capital budget, that's listed under reimbursements from other agencies that covers that portion of it. And then we also have, within the Stormwater Utility, as the portion of the road that pertains directly towards road project, or excuse me, in the sewer fund, as it pertains directly towards the conveyance of, of water on the Western Avenue project, we're funding a portion of the Western Avenue project out of sewer funds as well. So that shows where the, the dollars are coming from for the road projects. And then overall, in the two local motor fuel tax and state motor fuel tax funds, we have about $11.3 million of road money set aside specifically there, and then in the other funds that we have is where the remainder is coming from.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, and thank you for the extra time you've been spending with me yesterday to explain to me a lot of these things. I have to, to make sure that we all understand, in the 5th District, three things that are very important to my constituent, roads, roads, and roads. And I have to say that, now, when I look at this budget, we have the lines below here on page 14, a little bit over $11 million on this, that will be spent on roads from this budget here. $1.8 million will be spent in the 5th District. I mean, that's 16%, 16% of the budget. And when I look at the total budget for CIP, which is $39 million, it's 5% of the total CIP budget will go in the 5th District. And we all know, in the 5th District, 60% of our revenue for the city comes from the 5th District. I mean, through property taxes, sales tax, income tax, all the money that people spend, you know, restaurants and, and because their lifestyle. I, I just want to make a, a note here, and I'll make, make everybody understand, especially my constituent, that I'm not happy, I cannot be happy with these percentages. I mean, the, the, every time I go to a homeowner association meeting, and Mr. Bill Lewis was with me the last one a few days ago, which he did a tremendous job helping me out, I mean, people are asking about rate of, of rate of return on their investment. And when I tell them that we only have a million eight allocated to the 5th District this year, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I want to make sure that everybody understands it. I'm very, very concerned about this. For a couple of questions for Mr. Lewis, on page of CIP, we have page 67 and page 83. We're looking at a couple million dollars for pavement preservation. And my question to you, number one, is this $11 million we have in that column I talked about, how many miles are we responsible in Peoria, roughly?
All the roadways in Peoria, we have about 750 or 950 lane miles in the city of Peoria.
950. So my first question to you, sir, on page 67 of CIP, we got $800,000. I mean, my constituent in the 5th District, they want to know how we get in line here, basically. How is this money going to be spent? And especially when I look at your description, 36-foot wide pavement anywhere from 12, would cover anywhere from 12 miles to 80 miles. Speak to that a little bit, please. And the other page, was I said, page 83 is the same thing. We have $1.2 million for projects. That's a total $2 million. Please help us understand where and how you'll make decision where the money will, will be spent. Thank you.
Sure. We'll start with the, the pavement preservation implementation, the $800,000 that you're talking about. That is for all of our residential streets, where we're using our PCI, our Pavement Condition Index, to evaluate the roadways and rank them. And then that money, basically, will get distributed out between the five districts. So we did this back in 2014 and again in 2017, and we'll do it again here in the spring of 2020. We will go back out and look at all the roadways again, hire that out to be done. They'll all get new PCI ratings. A list will be generated with those ratings. Anything between a 70 and 100, and the worst road condition in the city would be a zero. 100 would be the best. So anything that has a rating above a 70 would be eligible for this program. So funds that are in this could go to those roadways. So what we'll do is we'll develop that list, and then we physically go out and drive those roadways and make a determination on which ones are the worst, and then we have to do, we will split that out between the five districts.
A 70 and plus?
70 and above, yes.
What percentage of the 950 miles of road roughly are we responsible that has a score 70 and plus?
I'd have to get that information for you. I don't have that with me.
Okay, along with this, I hate to ask reports, because I know how busy you guys are. 2017 was the last report we got, or the last time we did the survey for the PCI. I'd like to have a breakdown of where the money went for the last three years, down from 0 to 50, 50 to 70, and 70 plus. I'm really interested in knowing where, where the money and how we get in line to get some of that money, basically.
Sure, we could do that. Would you like to talk about the page 83, then?
Please.
So that is our roadway infrastructure projects. And again, we're still talking about residential streets. This is not our, our tierio or collector routes, but these are residential streets. And each year, we have put money aside to do reconstruction on those residential streets. So we talked about the 70 and above before, that would be eligible for that program. This is dealing with roadways that are in poorer condition than that 70. So we're talking about roadways that have a rating less than 50. Those roadways, again, it'd be the same type of thing. We'll go through our thing in the, in the spring, reevaluate everything. A new list will be generated, and then we will have to pick and choose which roadways get selected for that residential reconstruction. But they're a little bit different programs. One is for roadways that are in better condition, the pavement preservation one, and then this one is for roadways that are in, in poor condition.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Ali?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a, a staff question related to CIP. Under, regarding the new fire station on Western Avenue, where is that showing the report, the cost?
Councilwoman, that was, that was a project for, that was adopted in last year's budget, so it will not be in this 2020 spending plan. It's already been approved.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're still on first report back. Is there anything, so we'll go through the report backs, and then when we get done with that, we'll dive into the budget overall, okay? So on, on the CIP per district, Councilman Reganback?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Lewis, if you could just expand a little bit on the, the PCI. I think it's important for us to remember that for years, the, the perception was that the squeaky wheel got the, the potholes filled, and that it was all depending on who called first, or which councilman had the director's ear. So when we put the PCI in place, it was to take the politics out of it, because... because I can give you a list of streets in the 3rd District that I get calls on that are on the surface, maybe bad choice of words, in desperate need of repair also. But Director, I think there's a couple of things here that are important. The page 83 lists some of the major projects that have been done, and those really do encompass all the council districts. So it's a good barometer, I think, of taking into account the condition of the road, which was the objective of it, as well as minimizing the political end of it. Can you just help us, though? I think part of the discussion was also including traffic count. So how does that play in? Do you look at the PCI number first and then prioritize the bad ones by the traffic count? Just walk us through that, if you could, please.
Yeah, sure. The PCI is the first thing we look at, and it tells us a lot of things. But it's really talking about surface distresses. And there's a lot more to the picture when you're selecting roadways for reconstruction, you know, especially with our arterial streets and our collector streets. You know, at that point, we're looking at larger projects, and we're thinking about the average daily traffic that goes on that roadway in addition to other opportunities there might be for complete street, for any previous maintenance issues that we've had on specific roadways. Some of those are things that we have to evaluate as we're going through that process as well. Our operations people spend a lot of time out on some of these streets. And, you know, sometimes when they get elevated where they're spending money year after year after year, that may elevate that roadway to something that's a higher priority for us because we're dumping money into that all the time. So we do look at other things other than the PCI. That's the first thing we really look at. But there are many other things that go into that selection, and those are just a few of them. Another one would be grant opportunities. You know, we're doing the North University Street project right now. If we hadn't had those grants become available to us, that might not have gotten onto the project list, you know. So sometimes when the money becomes available for some of those things, it makes a difference on when we have to do that work.
So another example of that would be Willow Knolls and Allen. There, we were able to work with the county to get the funding to expedite that project. That was not on our list of roads to improve, and we were able to get that done.
Is our share on that?
1.8.
And what council district is that in?
That is in District 4 and 5, I believe, right? Or just 5?
And the university project from Pioneer Park to Town Line, that's also, that was the grant opportunity you were talking about, the economic. And what's the total amount of that?
That's around a $5 million project, and we received about $4 million of grant money for that.
All right. That's good information to keep in mind because there are investments being made in all of our districts that don't necessarily show up in this CIP because of those exact opportunities. One final thought on the pavement condition index. I think perhaps the most important thing that you can do for us as council members is be a little more, we need to understand the ranking system and the prioritization, I think. Because I can, it's never easy to tell your constituents, you know, that's on next year's plan or that's in the three-year plan. But if there's a logic to it, and if we can explain it, that makes it a whole different conversation. So I would just encourage us to improve that communication back to this body so that we can relay that to the constituents. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sort of as a follow-up to both Councilman Reganback's comments about the other projects, that there's been investments that are road projects that are just happened in the last year, as well as the question from Councilwoman Ali about the fire station in District 1 that's being built. Even though it was in last year's budget, could we get a list of those so that we can, because it's kind of hard to compare how much was spent on different projects or in different districts if we don't have that information? Because you have other projects from the past listed, so...
1-6 is the comparison of the capital improvement program between 2019 and 2020. So that's the projects that were approved. What you don't have with that is how much has been spent because some of these projects may take a couple of years to spend all the money in order to be, to complete the project. Just because the project is approved in last year's budget doesn't mean, for example, the fire station. We're not going to spend $2.5 million this year on the fire station. But it's that we will spend $2.5 million, that's what the budget is, or hopefully less. But that will come in as that project gets completed.
As a follow-up, why isn't that included, then, in the future years that are listed? Why isn't that fire station listed?
You've already approved it.
And the projected estimate for 2021 and 2022?
Because you've already approved it. Those, now we're looking, now you're shifting from a budget where you're approving projects into a cash basis look on when we're spending on projects. And that's a different snapshot of when you would be looking at that. What you're, which we have always adopted is a capital budget that shows you the projects that you're funding for that fiscal year. And so that's where we're giving you the five-year spending plan that's laid out here that just shows you those projects that we're approving for 2020 and then 2021.
Okay. And then if it's not captured in, what did you say? It was 1.1-6, Report Back 1-6 with the fire station? That's not included in there either?
The fire station is included in 1-6.
Okay.
And it's on page 19 of the, of the report, 14 of the report back. That's included.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
What you won't see is how much cash has been spent to date on that.
But the total is in there of the total amount that was approved?
The budgeted amount that you've approved in last year's budget is there, yes.
That's all. I wanted to just clarify that. Thank you.
Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This goes back to the PCI for our, I was going to say Director Lewis, but our Assistant Director. Concerning the PCI, I think it's been a while since, at least for me, that I've seen a report on the PCI reports. I'm guessing it's been a couple of years. I'm not sure if anybody's seen one recently. I do recognize that we've paid the money, but we haven't seen the reports. The reports are not just for Public Works, but for the council and as well the residents for Peoria. So I think that information, is it online?
So the third iteration of the PCI report, we're proposing as a project for next year. So what we have is we have the two years of data that we have that's available, and that was shared with council when that was completed, I believe it was a little over a year ago when that was, that was shared with the council. But we'll be, that hasn't changed. The budget that we're proposing for 2020 includes doing that for a third time. And then I think in three years after that, we're proposing that we do it again for the fourth time. So it's trying to do it on a regular basis after we see if we're making any progress in terms of moving that forward.
Yes, so, and that's exactly right. So that we want to be able to see, the very first time we did it, I was really excited that we were going, with this new method of measuring our roads so we can see the results and, you know, kind of take the politics out of it so we could look at it and use data to make our decision. But still, at the end of the day, I mean, how we make our decision is going to be based upon the council here on how we decide to move forward. And one of my big projects, I'm still waiting on response back from our new Public Works Director, is West Glen Avenue. And maybe he shared some information with you on that recently? Nope? Okay. And that's certainly one that I don't see in queue for construction, unless I missed it?
No. It's planned for engineering work in 2020 and then two years of construction in 2022 and 20, or 2021 and 2022. So it would be completed by 2022 is the plan from the CIP that we've presented to you here, so. And that would be, in the Glen Avenue project is, I'll find that for you, is listed on, that is listed on page 45 in your CIP. So it shows that the lion's share of the construction work, it shows $1.8 million worth of engineering and land acquisition being done in 2020. And then $4.7 million of construction in 2021, $5.3 million of construction in 2022, and then some wrap-up construction of about $675,000 in 2023. Page 45 in the CIP section of the budget book.
All right, yeah, I'm still waiting for some more information from him. I'll wait till he gets back here to finish that discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Manager, 1.2.
The second report back, council report back, was the information pertaining to the support for other agencies. You have the breakout from the general fund, CBG and home dollars, our Tourism Reserve Fund, the Riverfront, the Solid Waste Fund, and then all of our TIF redevelopment agreements are listed that rolls up into the support for other agencies. So if there's any questions on that report back, we'd be happy to answer any.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, as it relates to changes or modifications for the coming year's budget, will that be shown in a subsequent report or recommendations? I'm specifically referring to the recommendation that I made about the Downtown Development Corporation.
If council approves an amendment to fund the DDC, it would be reflected, and we would make that amendment.
When will that amendment come forward?
I would imagine that if council wants to start making amendments next week, we can start to pull those together and then start to finalize, you know, the spending plan overall.
So what I've recommended relative to the Downtown Development Corporation, if you notice on page 6, several lines down, four lines before the, four items before the bottom under General Fund, the recommendation was made to reduce the general fund's budget by $100,000 by removing all funding support for the Downtown Development Corporation. In discussion with the city manager, I've asked him to determine if the Warehouse District TIF was an eligible source of funding to support the Downtown Development Corporation in what they do. And his response was, yes, it is an eligible source of funding. So my recommendation was that we would pull, we would move $100,000 out of the Warehouse District TIF in order to support this coming year, the Downtown Development Corporation, with the understanding that not only will the Downtown Development Corporation come before this body on a quarterly basis, as we've asked the GPEDC to do, and to provide an outline of what items that they're doing in the Warehouse District to support and bring back funding into the budgets based upon the development that's happening there. And they have agreed to do that. Mr. Frilinger has agreed to do that. But also, I'm talking with the manager, I think it would be prudent that all organizations, well, subsidies or support to other agencies, that they be required to come before this body and provide to us an outline of how they're using the funds, public funds that are provided to them. And so with that in mind, I'd like for us to bring forth an amendment with the support of this body at the time that it comes forward to support funding the Downtown Development Corporation. I believe each of you may have received an email from the DDC outlining all of the activities that they have been instrumental in bringing forth to our city, to the Warehouse District. When there was a period of time where we had no Assistant City Manager, pretty much the DDC operated in a quasi-governmental capacity, in my opinion, to help to bring and spur development in that area. No doubt, some of that would have occurred anyway. But I contend that the lion's share of it would have not occurred with all the negotiations back and forth, not to also include the riverfront pad coming down. That was all led by the DDC. And based upon the reports that you all received, I hope you would agree that the $100,000 is well-spent. I will say, going forward, all organizations or other agencies that are provided with city funding, when they come and provide their report to us, it will give us an opportunity to determine if the future years we would have the funds or the will to continue to support those agencies at some level. So with that, that would be my direction to the city manager. Thank you.
Probably for the, just for the sake of consensus, and we'll probably be doing a lot more of this next week when it's actual budget meeting. But if we're bringing any budget amendments, proposals forward, we'll just do it with a motion in a second, just so the manager knows there's consensus to do so. So this isn't a final vote. This is just to bring the amendment forward when we do do that on the budget. So it's a motion.
So my motion is to bring forth an amendment that would then be voted on in the prior session.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilman Reganback, is there discussion on this particular motion? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do support giving the DDC $100,000 like we have in the past. However, I'd like to see us maybe take that money from somewhere other than the Warehouse TIF. So I do have a question about the Warehouse TIF, if I may. How much money currently is in the Warehouse TIF? Do we know approximately?
In, you have, in your budget report backs, you have the budgets, the individual budgets for the TIF. That's Report Back Number 1-5. Director Schragers, I don't know if you want to point to the Warehouse District TIF. And I think it's on page 11 in the report back. We have the Warehouse District TIF, which is listed there. We have revenues of $866,000, expenditures of $875,000, and about, roughly about $785,000 of fund balances.
And will you remind me how much time is left in that TIF? When does it expire?
I think we have about 13 more years left in that TIF.
So if I may, the reason why I am concerned about us taking it from the TIF because that money we need and we plan to use as incentives for developers to continue to develop the Warehouse District, as well as a big proposal we know that's coming on the parking situation. So I would like us to see if there's maybe another place in our budget. Maybe it's even from reducing the amount that we give to another agency to give to the Downtown Development Corporation rather than taking it from the Warehouse TIF.
As long as the, my ultimate goal is to get the Downtown Development Corporation funded, what organization do you think would be able to absorb a $100,000 loss?
Maybe, maybe rather than get into that tonight, we move this forward and staff can, if there's, if there's an area. I don't think we want to start picking and choosing which agency we're going to withhold from tonight.
So then if I may, could we, would the maker, the motion, I don't know how particular it was, make it more general so that your motion is to fund the Downtown Development Corporation for $100,000 and then entertain proposals for where that money will come from the budget?
I need to ask the city manager. Mr. City Manager, if we were to just throw out, asking you to find another $100,000, not to get into it tonight, where would you start looking? Would you start looking at other agencies? Or would you start looking at reducing something out of the general fund?
You have, you have the choice of using TIF funds, which I believe that the efforts and the mission of the Downtown Development Corporation would be a legal allowable expense out of TIF funds. So you could use it there, or you'd have to take it out of the general fund. If you take it out of the general fund, you have two choices. You're then taking dollars away from some other funded project or department in the general fund, or you're going to have to reduce the amount of revenue or amount of cash that you're putting into the fund. balance for 2020. So that's, those are the real choices that you have with this. It's, you're going to have to find someplace to take that from, that is already proposed with the general fund being balanced, or you're going to have to find that money and take it out of reserves, which we're trying to build our reserves back up. So those are your choices.
Okay, and so the reason I had suggested the warehouse district in the first place is because the increment is the, what comes back after development has occurred. And so as development is occurring, it puts money in, the increment goes into the TIF fund to support the activities to bring more development. That is what the Downtown Development Corporation is all about. So the purpose of putting it out of the warehouse TIF is to fund the organization that is actually building the increment in the warehouse TIF. And I don't want to, I would rather pull it out of this area, because this balance has pretty much been around this amount for the last few years, than to throw a dart at some other agency, Peoria Area Conventions and Visitors Bureau, or Arts Partners, or Animal Shelter. I would not want to see them lose any of their funding, and the way to prevent that from happening is to take it from a fund that is generating increment to do exactly what the DDC is doing. So I'd like to leave the motion the way it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Graham?
Mr. Fralinger, could you come on up to the lectern? I would like you to respond to a question. Good to have you here, and could you, as a matter of information for the council, delineate the boundaries that the DDC attempts to promote development in? What's your boundaries are?
The boundaries that the Board of Directors has kind of informally approved would be the warehouse district, which essentially is from MacArthur between Jefferson and the river, up to Comf, and then it circles up around Comf and grabs the medical district where the hospitals are at. So it would include the medical district, the central business district, which is basically between I-74 and Comf, and then the riverfront district, which runs along the river from I-74 down to, let's say, the Bob Michael Bridge and Washington Street, as well as a portion of the East Bluff-Grossell District, which is basically from OSF Hospital down to the river, essentially.
Yeah, and I think you've come pretty close to Central Firehouse as well, on the northern boundary. So it's a very, very important stretch that we're attempting to promote, and I think this is something we need to keep in mind. I'm agnostic as to where it comes from. If, you know, you think that it's good, come from that, that'd be fine, but it certainly serves more than just the warehouse district. And I don't believe there is another TIF that would be more logical, manager, do you?
No, other than, I mean, it does encompass, most of our TIFs downtown are covering almost all of downtown. I mean, we could certainly look at trying to prorate it across a number of the TIFs that we have to fund that. You're taking a smaller portion from those TIFs. The central business district TIF is in a, is currently in a negative fund balance situation, so that wouldn't work. But in the others, we certainly could.
Thank you, Mr. Fralinger, for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes, I, I'm concerned also about taking it out of the TIF. But, Mr. Manager, could you tell us what, on page eleven with the warehouse TIF, the major uses of the increment, the major use of the increment is support to other agencies, eight hundred sixteen thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you turn to page seven in the report back, warehouse district TIF, you'll see the list of all of the redevelopment agreements that we have for the warehouse district.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm confused on the word "agency." So these are, these are rebates of real estate taxes.
Correct.
Okay. And we're spending just about all that we're taking in?
Correct.
Okay. And that particular benefit, I think, is what has made the warehouse district successful. So it isn't like they have extra money. You're spending all the money, and you're spending it, I think, on a good cause. I am very much in favor of restoring the funding for the DDC, but I would rather the motion not specify where the one hundred thousand dollars might come from, and I think all of us have a week to let the manager know our preferences. But my preference is not to use that warehouse TIF money. It is being very well used now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilwoman Moore, you're doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing. If we expect more money to be spent, we have to offer an alternative to pay for it. Folks, this is the very, this is, this is not approving the budget tonight, this is offering a suggestion. We can amend her this again multiple times, but let's, let's not get bogged down in, in the detail. Let's commend her for actually offering a suggestion. Everybody's going to start saying we need to throw a hundred thousand dollars back in for this and that and that, and we'll figure out how to pay for it later, and then we'll never get this figured out. So let's, let's just see how the manager, bring this forward, talk to the manager, talk to the Economic Development Director, offer your suggestions for other sources, and then when it comes back for approval, this, this isn't even a First Amendment or any, and I mean, this, this is just an idea at this point. I think we're way overthinking this. So can I call the question?
We're not seeing any other lights here. Council understands this isn't final action. We have time to come back with alternatives, if that be the case. Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Please, Councilmen's here.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just got a couple, just one more common question. Number one, I have to answer my colleague, Mr. Riegenbach, three million dollars, so I'm not going after your district's money. But I appreciate you getting the history lesson, number one. Number two, we've got a couple of small victories the last couple of years with the university project and Willinows. The CPI last year was still thirty million dollars, and so we didn't get, that was ten percent. These two projects was roads, and that's all they want. People in the fifth district are very generous, but we need better roads, roads, roads and roads. Every homeowner association meeting I go to, that's my point tonight, is I got to fight for the people of the fifth district and see if we can get more money for our roads in the fifth district. So, and one question.
Councilman's here?
Yes.
Just, we have a motion on the floor for the next item. You're one item behind. So we'd like to, to the topic that is on the floor.
Yes, sir. Thanks, sorry.
Okay. Did you have something for the item on the floor, or is that for?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. To the motion, Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question for the city manager. So what is the appropriate way to use TIF funds? And I guess do we have to ear tag what this money's going to be spent on?
So when you adopt a TIF, you adopt a budget within that TIF. Inside that TIF, you're estimating then over a twenty-three-year period of time, how much are we going to spend with redevelopment agreements? How much are we going to spend on infrastructure improvements? How much are you going to spend on studies and marketing of the TIF? And this would fall into a legally allowable expenditure about marketing this area. That's specifically what the Downtown Development Corporation does. They are trying to foster economic growth inside this geographic area. So this would be a legally allowable expenditure under the Illinois statutes for TIF. So this is, this is one of those areas. So you adopt that budget that says, here's how much we're going to spend over the course of the twenty-three-year period of time. Then, as you work through projects, you have budgets every year that you adopt, and you're going to start spending that money. In this instance, we're getting about eight hundred thousand dollars coming in and about eight hundred thousand dollars going out, specifically to try and grow those businesses in that area. So we've used it in the past for other, other types of, of infrastructure improvements, and we're going to do that again as we look at some of our other TIF districts where we're proposing that we put some money back into infrastructure, because we're at a point where we have no more development agreements, but we have the opportunity to now invest the proceeds into the infrastructure. So.
So with that being said, for marketing the area, so are you saying that it's got to be used for marketing funds?
We-
Can't be used for salaries?
No, you, you can use it to pay for the, you can, you can use this to pay for the operations of the Downtown Development Corporation as a legally allowable expenditure under the, under the TIF Act, under the state law. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Euler, next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do support restoring the funding, but I have some concerns over the precedence that it sets taking it out of the TIF, because the primary responsibility is not, in my opinion, should not just be focusing on the warehouse district. And in my opinion, this sends the message that that's what we're paying for, is the focus on the warehouse district. And frankly, I think that we have some other areas of the downtown that are in much greater need of attention from the DDC than the warehouse district. I also have a little bit of concern over funding it that way, where future conversation goes, as there isn't, potentially down the road won't be funding in the warehouse district TIF to continue to pay for this, if this is a service that we want to have in the future. So I think that we need to have some additional discussion about that in the later discussions, but those are my thoughts on this item. Thank you.
Councilmember Ali?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I guess I want to request that the motion be restated.
Madam Clerk?
The motion is to bring an amendment funding the Downtown Development Corporation, and then, I believe that's to fund it by the warehouse district TIF.
So we're not voting on the amendment, we're voting on having staff bring back an amendment?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to respond to Councilperson Euler's two items. The second item first, there's already been discussion and the Downtown Development Corporation has been made aware that this body would, would most likely not agree to continue to fund out of the warehouse district at this level each year. I've recommended to the city manager that because of the work that the Downtown Development Corporation is doing, that we look at for upcoming years, some way to fund them at some level. We hadn't talked about any number. So they've already been made aware that a reduction may occur or may not, that they need to start looking at that. And if I can ask Mr. Fralinger to come back up and restate what you, what you indicated a few minutes ago about the boundaries that the Downtown Development District oversees as far as assisting with development?
Excuse me, could you repeat that? I didn't quite hear.
To restate the areas that you indicated the Downtown Development Center Corporation manages as far as development, you talked about some areas of the hospitals, you talked about the, the boundaries from MacArthur, Comf, you were given the boundaries of the Downtown Development Corporation's influence.
Yes, we, the Downtown Development Corporation is focused on the entire downtown, and we have had some discussions with you regarding the future operations. So-
It is other areas outside of the warehouse district.
That's correct. The strategy, if I could just emphasize, because we've talked a lot about the warehouse district, the strategy that most communities use, and it is our strategy as well, is to focus on increasing the number of residents that are living in that, in the downtown. That supports the businesses, it extends their hours of operation, it supports additional activities downtown. That's what makes the downtown revived and a vital place to be. That is what then generates the business demand to move in the downtown and relocate in the downtown. So you've got to start with a housing component, and then you move into the other area of commercial development and bringing in, relocating the businesses into the downtown. That's a strategy that cities throughout the United States have used. It's very successful. And because the warehouse district has the appropriate building structures for that type of loft redevelopment, that's why so much of the activity that you've seen happen has been in the warehouse district TIF, or in the warehouse district, although not exclusively in that district. But that's kind of why there's so much energy in that particular area. As we move forward in the future, what's, what you're going to see happen is, as warehouse district becomes more mature and the neighborhood gets established, you're going to see more demand for businesses to be located in the downtown. And that's where you're going to see increased occupancy in the central business district, the East Bluff-Grossell District, across I-74, the riverfront district. You'll see more retail activity in that district as well because of the number of people downtown. And this is a strategy that not only contributes to the revitalization of the downtown, but it also makes the entire region more competitive, because businesses want to be in dynamic urban communities. And it doesn't necessarily have to be millions of people like Chicago or New York. It's even mid-sized cities like Peoria, Des Moines, Madison, Wisconsin, and so on and so forth. So that's the strategy we've adopted, and that's why so much of our focus has been in the, in the warehouse district, just because the first component is increasing that mixed-use development. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. And so with the, some clarification on the motion, I'd like to remove the word "warehouse," and so it would just indicate that this would, these funds would come out of TIF. And we could, that lives, I believe that will give the manager some flexibility because of the range of area that it is managed by this organization to look at where it would be best. Thank you.
The motion is okay with that modification. So again, this is not final action. We're just going to move this to the next step. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, or I guess we're back to, sorry, city manager, one, three.
So tying back in with the DDC, the question was, would the city lose seats on the DDC with a reduced contribution? The answer to that was, from the DDC was yes. Although the bylaws don't explicitly say that, the answer was yes. I don't know if there's any questions on that.
Okay.
The next special event fee was the item one-four that came from Councilman Euler. This report back just simply says, in 2017, prior to the establishment of the special event- event fees, we had 98 public event licenses issued. In 2018, we had 84 public event licenses. We collected $58,987 and 50 cents in fees. Year-to-date, in 2019, we've issued 71 public event licenses and have collected $69,250.
Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you just ballpark, tell us, if you know off the top of your head, what we budgeted for revenue on these? Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
The fifth budget report back talks, shows you, and it begins on page 10, it is the TIF budgets by individual TIF. So this breaks out the total revenues that are being collected from each of our TIFs. It shows you where we may be incurring personnel expenses for our economic development staff, auditing expenses, the support to other agencies lines, which are on pages six and seven in your report back. That's the, the redevelopment expenses that we have with redevelopers. Any capital expenses would be in the capital book. And then the, any transfers that are going out to other funds are listed at the bottom, and then you'll see the change in fund balances. So that is for the year 2020. So if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer any.
Okay.
Budget report back number six is the CIP comparison to the prior year. This shows you the $30 million CIP program that we had in 2019, along with the $39 million program for 2020. And it really just shows you what was approved for both years. We do have, on the city's website, is the 2019 detail sheets. If you want to go back and look at the detail sheets, we do have those out on the web as well. You just have to go back to, to last year's budget, budget year in order to look at that on the website. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any on this.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question I have, since it's not broken down by district the way the budget is, is there, would it be difficult to do that by district so we can, so it's not, so it's comparing apples to apples rather than? I know, because you have it broken down by different TIFs.
This, this is broken down by funding source.
Right.
And it just shows you the comparison between the two years. We'll see if we can run, I'm, I'm certain we can run your report that shows you the comparison by each district. So we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item, or report back number seven, which was the income tax and personal property replacement tax comparison to the prior year. This is on page 18. This shows you actual receipts that we have received for income taxes and personal property replacement taxes for fiscal years 2015, 16, 17, 18, and then the partial year for 2019, what we've collected to date. And we'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any on this. Budget report back number eight was a, came from Councilman Ruckregel. That was a question about our confidence levels on revenues. Here, we just talked about really how comfortable we are with the, the way that we've been projecting our revenue streams. I think we've been trying to be very conservative in terms of looking at those revenue streams. We do know that, that PPRT revenues and income tax revenues have seen some strong growth, and we've still tried to be very conservative in projecting those revenues. So if there's any questions on, on our revenue assumptions or what we've done, either Director Skraggins or I would be happy to answer them. Okay. Budget report back number nine pertains to the, the garbage cost per household. This came from Councilman Ruckregel as well. This shows you the, the projected five-year expenses for the, the garbage fund as well as the projected revenues. If the council were to approve, setting the rate at $21 and then stepping that up to $25 over a five-year period of time. Our total costs, it, what it shows is on a household basis that we go from expenses of $19.71 in 2020 up to $22.74 in 2024. The revenues that, if you set the rates with the resolution, we'll bring forward to you next week for your, at least first reading consideration, would be $20 in 2020 per household, moving up to $23.83 per household, per month, coming back in. Overall, what that would do is it would start to set aside some money that we could start to put towards the, repaying the general fund, since the garbage fund owes the general fund some dollars. At the end of the, of the report backs, we do have a summary of, that, that, as well as just kind of a quick summary of what our other communities are charging. That beget, that is attachment 1-9, and that is really at, right after page 30 in the report back. And it shows you what Peoria, Bloomington, Champaign, Decatur, East Moline, Morton, Normal, Pekin are charging their customer, or their citizens for trash. So you can get a good example, or at least a good snapshot comparatively of what those other communities are doing. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have them on-
Councilman Moore.
Trash.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, is there any way to determine if the second recycle pickup is increasing the cost to residents for their monthly fee? My, my question is predicated on the fact that the documents you provide us show that recycling, the, the funds that, for profit, if you will, that was coming from recycling has gone down each year. But the cost because of the other countries who were accepting our trash is no longer accepting our trash. And so we have to find ways in this country to re, to reuse those or to bury those in landfills. So is there any way to determine what amount that monthly bill is impacted by the second level of pickup?
We can, we can certainly have a conversation with PDC and try and give you a cost estimate of what that, what, by switching to bi-weekly recycling pickup, what that has added to the cost of the contract, and then come back with some information from, from PDC on that. So we'll be happy to do that as, as an additional report back for next week.
I understand, I'm not suggesting that we don't recycle. I, I do believe we should have recycle. I do believe we should have it picked up. But if the costs, if the benefit of picking it up is being reduced annually, but the cost of picking it up is increasing, it sounds, that sounds an inverse relationship there that we need to look at going back, no, let me rephrase that. I'm not suggesting we go back to anything. I'm just trying to find out what the additional pickup is costing us. Thank you.
Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager, just refresh my memory, my memory. The budget goes five years. Why would you go five years at a time?
This, this, what I, what I did here is just project out over the five-year period of time. The actual contract that we have with PDC is a seven-year contract with a three-year option to renew. This was just simply a, a projection for the next five years to try and put that together.
How much money do we, this account owes the general fund?
Overall, it's about $4.5 million, I think, is what the, is what the, the fund owes the general fund right now.
So if I understand your numbers correctly, we're going to have a profit or surplus, I should say, of $153,000 next year, right?
We're projecting a nominal, a nominal surplus that would then be transferred back, that cash would be transferred back to, to start to repay that debt in the general fund.
So do we have a plan how we will repay that $4.2 million to the general fund? I mean, at this, at this rate, my point is at this rate, it'll take 10, 15, 20 years.
It, it, it could. The question then becomes what level do you want to set the residential trash collection fee at in order to repay the general fund? Or, or what expenses do you want to cut out of this budget in order to start to accelerate the repayment of the general fund? Those are questions that council has to think about in terms of the service level. Right now, the service level that you've, that, that the council has approved is weekly trash pickup, bi-weekly recycling, 37 weeks of yard waste pickup unlimited, and unlimited bulky pickup. So if there's, if there's anything that, that you want to do on the expense side, you have to start to look at, at saying, do we want to reduce services that, when we went through the contract, that's what the citizens wanted us to provide?
So how do we account for this IOU of $4.2 million in the general fund?
I'll ask Director Skraggins to explain how we're, we're handling the, the deficit and the due-to and due-froms.
Right. Currently, we, we reflect the due-to and due-from between the two funds. So there's an amount due to the general fund that's repaid whenever the cash becomes available. Right now, we're at about four, projected to be at 4.2. That fluctuates during the year because we actually collect our garbage fee on the, on the property tax bill, so we only get distributions from June to October. So during the beginning of the year, we're probably a little more indebted. So any surplus that would be left over, the remaining, at the end of the year, would be paid back to the general fund and reduce that deficit balance.
So do we account for this $4.2 million as real cash in general fund?
It's shown as, just like a receivable would be shown in the general fund.
Sir. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. It, it's probably also important to mention that there was just a lot of years that went by that we totally subsidized the, the garbage. And that was just a change in policy a number of years ago. So there is a big amount owed to the general fund, but it was because of change in policy, whereas now the council has strived over the last number of years to collect our cost in that. Councilmember Reganback.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager, if you could look at the, on report back nine again, the residential trash disposal, that's our tipping fee that we pay to the landfill, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what's the most recent anticipated date for the closure of landfill two?
Maybe I'll ask Treasurer Nick Teen to, to discuss that. I think that members of the landfill committee might, might be more attuned to that than, than the city manager.
Hi, Ant. Yeah. We had that discussion actually just last month, so we're still looking out a couple of years. The amount of tonnage coming into the landfill continues to decline. And part of that is just a trend that's happening across all landfills. Doing the enhanced recycling program has provided a small change in that regard, but not as significant. As the report outlines, you know, when it comes to recycling, that while it mentions two, two big countries, China and India, they have basically stopped taking any recycling from the United States. So that's on the negative side. The positive side, though, is because there's been, become such a glut of newspaper and cardboard, four new plants, paper plants have sprung up in the United States. So when, when you're providing these subsidies, it takes some time for the markets to react to be able to begin to see this as a viable enterprise again. And so we're beginning to see that in the United States. But, you know, if you're going to look at, and the real question that I think is, is for your consideration, and PDC has brought this out numerous times, is the fact that so many of the items that are going into the recycling bins aren't recycled. Everything can be recycled. Not everything is economically recyclable. And if you're going to do that, and you're doing this hand sorting that goes on, even with the automation, this is all very labor-intensive. And so the cost for recycling is quite high, and yet there's an economic benefit. But right now, we are, things are not in equilibrium in the marketplace right now.
When landfill three opens in-
Three to five years.
Three to five years. So that explains why we continue to see those disposal rates go up for the next five years, Mr. Manager.
What, what we built into the projections that are in front of you here don't take into account that landfill two is closed. It, it just assumes that that stays open. So this is a worst-case projection. If the landfill three opens up, your disposal costs will drop about 30%. So that's, that's one point that, that we're just waiting for that to happen as soon as the landfill gets filled.
Thank you for that clarification. I remember when I was on landfill committee, we thought it was a couple of years out. So I appreciate you're using the, the higher costs with the hope that we'll see a reduction at that time. Thank you.
Yeah, just on this topic, and the next one kind of ties into it, just the state of the recyclable market. And FOTH has attachment A at the end of our report backs that kind of does a lot deeper dive into the state of, of the recycling market. But, Mr. Manager, not for, not for tonight, but for, hopefully for our budget discussion next week. I do think that a more fine-tuned informational piece about the recyclables, and I use glass, for instance, you know, glass is, I don't remember the negative, the number, but it was a negative number in terms of its value to the recycling market. So clearly, glass is not being recycled right now because it's in a negative position. So for everybody that thinks they're doing a great job by putting glass in the recyclables, it's going to the landfill. I mean, whether you like it or not, it's going to the landfill because there's no market for it. So, but, so my point is, we have to have that conversation with PDC for a number of reasons. If, if they have a material that's not marketable, that's going to a landfill, we want it going in our landfill. I mean, it's, it's, it's going against us twice. We're, we're, we're paying for it to be recycled, it's going into a landfill, and it's not going into our landfill, it's going into another one. So those are the kind of things that we have to understand because we need to have that conversation with PDC, and maybe we can, maybe we can adjust that over, you know, they don't want to hold on to that stuff if they don't have to, but at least if it's not going to be recycled, it should be going into our landfill. And then we can adjust accord, adjust their rates accordingly on, on, on the pickup. And that's the second part of the equation, is, is, as one of the council members just asked about that, the cost for that, that service. We have a Cadillac trash and waste recycling and lawn waste service in this town. It's Cadillac. Nobody, you can look at what the other communities are offering. Nobody's offering unlimited garbage, 37 or 38 weeks of landscape plus unlimited, nobody offers that for the price we offer. We really have to understand that if we're looking at costs here. And, you know, maybe some of that cost savings goes into some of these other items on the, in the budget that we're trying to find a spot for. That's all I'm saying. So this is really good information, but having, having some quick information from, from PDC to make these decisions is really important for us.
Still a couple of lights here. Councilmember Euler is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, just to add to your comments there from our discussions in landfill committee, it's not just the fact that that material ends up going to the landfill, but it's the labor cost to separate it out of the rest of the recycling, and the fact that the glass tears up the equipment. And all of those costs are being passed on to us through our garbage contract. And so I think that it needs a lot more attention and discussion going forward when we're evaluating these things, is what is the true cost of each of these items? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along the, the same lines of that conversation, when you prepare that report back, if, I think we're all aware that they're not recycling glass. Are there other materials that aren't being recycled due to the market? I mean, we should know that, and if that's the case, then, I mean, do we want to change our policy and notify the public and then potentially with that lower some of our costs? I think that's all something we should consider if we're really going, if we're going to raise the fees. If there's some way you can quantify that or get a report back from PDC, I think that would be helpful.
Certainly can, and we'll, we'll look at that. And really, the next report back, 110, that talks about the state of the recyclable market, that's the, the attachment 110 in your packet.
Looking at it right now.
Talks about- Talks about the specific areas, and there's growth in, in many of the recyclables. Probably the two that are, that they're not seeing any, any growth at all or a negative position are in plastics, numbers three to seven, and within glass. So those are the two that there's, that we're really seeing that. So we can certainly have that conversation with PDC and, and provide a report back on, on what that, that cost impact is, not only to the company, how, how we're eating that cost in terms of the cost that we're paying them for that, and is there any savings if we don't take that as a, as a future and what, what that might look like? So we can do that.
Okay. And then I, I do have another question related to this topic. I've heard that it was reported in the landfill committee that if any of the containers have glass in it, they just toss it all, not just the glass part, but the whole load into the landfill. Can you clarify and find out if that's accurate?
The answer is no.
Okay.
We're single screen. We're single screen. So...
He's on.
Right. So they would...
Recycling center in Peeken, and as a result, that's when it goes through their machine and it's sorted. Glasses separated out, broken glass falls through, tears up the machine, and it's that air, that information, that glass, that's, that ends up being hauled to not our landfill, but to their own landfill. And so, I mean, that's tonnage that's not going to us at sixty-some dollars a ton, which we receive a five-dollar host fee, it's going to another landfill altogether.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That was kind of 1-9 and 1-10 combined.
Correct. Correct. And, and we've really kind of talked about 111, which is how do we decide which roads get fixed? And I think that, that we will follow up for Councilman, or Councilman Riegenbach, who just wanted a, a little bit more of a description about why certain roads are being selected, so we can follow up on that as well. Question 112 pertained to the Eagleview Tiff and the school district. We had some discussion at, at last week's budget meeting about the, the four hundred thousand dollars to be set aside for the demolition of Harrison School. Since the inception of the Eagleview Tiff, the Tiff District has collected a property tax increment in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. Of this amount, the school district's portion would have been about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We then looked at, you know, how much since the school district sold Harrison School in two thousand and twelve, you know, how many times did we go out, what have been some of the, the costs that we've incurred for that? That's listed in the Report Back as well as, you know, the fact that we're not receiving any of the stormwater utility charges on that. So again, we know that this is a big issue. It, it really does look like the, the dollar amount that the city has expended, coupled with the, the amount that would be budgeted, is pretty equivalent to what the, the school district has in the, the Tiff, or has that, that, that they could claim would be lost, quote, lot, and I say that with air quotes, lost revenue, because this is a legally allowable Tiff district. This is, this is, what it's intended for is to be able to do land acquisition or to do site prep and site remediation, which is demolition work. So this is, this would be allowable under the Tiff Act. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer any, any more on this report.
Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The balance in the Eagleview Tiff at this point is, and I'm almost there.
It's on page ten.
Five hundred, is that sources?
Oops. Yep, it's on page ten.
Yeah. The total fund balance as of January first, two thousand and twenty is expected to be five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
Correct.
And we're suggesting that we move out four hundred thousand of that amount to, for demolition.
Correct.
So we're talking about moving out four hundred thousand dollars for demolition, and we're estimating that demolition cost is between one and one and a half million dollars?
We, we knew that we didn't have the full amount. That's where we were looking at, at is there any value in the deconstruction efforts that might be going forward? We have sent information in about Harrison School as a potential brownfield site to see if we can't get some brownfield remediation dollars for this. It's going to take more than the dollars that the city has to be able to, to take this building down. There's just no way around it.
So haven't we been looking at brownfield grants in the past, looking to, trying to find them, and they're not, we've not found any?
We, we've been successful in some areas of getting some brown, the Tabor property is one example, in, along Adam Street, where we have been able to, to see some, some brownfield remediation funds. We'll need to make sure that we have a Phase One environmental study completed, and then, then you're, you're open for any remediation work, which would be a Phase Two. And in this instance, what we're talking about is demolishing a property and, and taking it down to, to remove the, the nuisance from the community. You know, the other aspect is that we'll have to look to, to other sources, be that the, the state or, or the school district or others to try and take that down, so.
Well, the brownfield grants would pay for the Phase One and Phase Two?
Usually, the first phase of brownfield funding is you do the Phase One study, get that paid for, and then you come back at a later date with the Phase Two. So it may be a lengthy time before we're able to get the building down, just based upon the, the, the time it would take to, to move forward with that.
And so help me understand, are there matching funds that are required for those brownfield grants if we get them?
I'm gonna look to Director Black, who's, who's coordinated some of the brownfield grants that we've had in the past. Sometimes there is a, a certain match that we have to have.
Councilwoman, as the manager indicated, we have received quite a bit of funding for assessment grants, so that would be the Phase One, Phase Two assessments related to determining if there are environmental hazards on properties. The actual remediation grants are much more competitive, and there are fewer dollars available, typically because the, the process that, that in theory is supposed to be followed is that the assessment is paid for using grant dollars, and then once the property, once everyone understands the pros and cons of the property, then the private market would come in and pay for the actual remediation or redevelopment. So there's less money for, less public money available for that particular step. In terms of matching dollars, generally, there is, there's no matching requirement for the assessment component, but for the remediation, mostly because there is a limited amount of money available, that although there is no, not necessarily required matching dollars, there's almost always the necessity for matching dollars to come in and make up the difference.
So thank you for that, Director. So I have a couple of concerns. Currently, that school is a attractive nuisance, in that no matter how many times we've tried to board up the lower levels to keep people out, somehow they find their way in. I was over in front of, went to the old Harrison, went to the new Harrison School and saw someone lurking about the front of the area where the, the door was open, the area in the front of the building. And so my concern is that, and thank you, Director, if we reserve this four hundred thousand dollars out of a five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar balance, that effectively moves it out of the rent potential to be able to do additional remediation of that school building until, in, in your words, there may be a period of time before we are able to find brownfield money to take that building down. I'm afraid that as we continue to board up and it gets torn down and we board it up again, one of the suggestions that I've made to the Assistant Director is that perhaps we brick the bottom lower windows and doors to prevent entry. I would imagine it would be more difficult for someone to scale to the third floor to get in that building. I, I, I know that there are some teachers in that, in the new Harrison School, who are concerned about the activity that is taking place in the old Harrison School building. And so I would not like to see the monies handcuff this, these funds with the knowledge, as you indicated, that it may be a period of time before we're able to get the additional million dollars, million one, to take the building down. And so I'd like to see that money not reserved to tear the school down, because it's, well, it's not enough to tear the school down. We already know that. I would like to see that money moved back into the Tiff and not reserved, so that we can use it to prevent entry, to lessen the opportunity for some negative consequence with the openings of that building. And, and remind me again, how much was that building sold for?
Um, was it ten dollars, I think?
Ten dollars? So the building was sold for ten dollars, is that right? So it was sold for ten dollars, and, and for that, the city gets to spend up to a million and a half to tear it down. So is, is that a, an amendment that I need to make to have that money moved back into the? So that my amendment would be to, to not lock down the four hundred thousand, to put it back into the Eagleview Tiff, so that we could do some remediation or, or prepare the building or lock down the building so no one can go inside for whatever nefarious reason that they would want to be inside that building? Until such time as we know that there are additional funds, grant funds or brownfield funds, that may need some kind of matching funds, then we can pull funds out of the, the Tiff at that time. Thank you. That would be my motion.
Let's hear a second. Again, this is a recommended amendment that'll come back. Councilman Riegenbach, is there additional discussion on that item? Please cast your ballots. Passed unanimously. Mr. Manager?
Item 113 is a report back about streetlight pole painting. This just simply talks about the twenty-five-hundred ornamental streetlights that we have, and I think we, we're spending roughly about fifteen thousand dollars a year to, to paint roughly about eighty to a hundred poles a year is what we're, we're trying to hit. And so if there's any questions on this, City Engineer and Assistant Director, Public Works Director Lewis is here to answer any questions if we have any.
Councilman Grab?
Yes, I appreciate the report back and the manner in which you're gonna tackle the challenge before us to preserve what we've already invested in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 114 is just simply a summary of inter-fund transfers. This was a request that was made from Councilman Seer. This shows you where the dollars are being transferred out of specific funds and where dollars are being transferred into specific funds. And that begins on page twenty-seven in the Report Back. There's also a summary of the TRIF, the operating transfers out of the Tiff project funds as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, just a couple of questions. I don't want to go through every item, but I just want to make sure I understand and the public understand, all of these accounts we have are restricted account, correct?
We, we, we have a series of different types of funds, more than forty-five different funds that we have across the city, that are set aside for specific purposes or specific revenue streams or for specific business activities that we operate.
So they would be restricted. My understanding, general fund is the only one that is not restricted, correct? So, and I, I mean, I don't want to lengthen the conversation, I'm just trying to understand, like stormwater utility, for example, one of my concern. So when you transfer money in and out of the stormwater utility fee, what are the, I guess, acceptable accounts? I mean, because what I'm trying to say is, are we using money from the stormwater utility fee in some other account that we're not supposed to be using those money in? I mean, what, how do you, how do you move from one account to another?
So, so a stormwater utility was set up as an enterprise fund. It is supposed to be fully supporting its operations as an enterprise fund in order to cover all of its expenses. So the fund as is set up currently, if you jump back in the budget book, and I'm gonna ask you to turn to page fourteen in your budget book, and it's a landscape page that talks about the, the stormwater utility fund. For two thousand and twenty, we're estimating ten point two million dollars of revenue in the stormwater utility fund. We have two point nine million dollars of personnel expenses that are the costs of the public works employees that run stormwater management and forestry operations out of this fund. There's one point three million dollars worth of capital or of contractual expenses that we have that are included for not only operating the fund, but for sending out the bills that we have, to make sure that we have the billing system operated. Then there's a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars worth of supplies. We have three point eight million dollars of capital improvements that are proposed to come out of this stormwater utility fund, and then transfers of one million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And those transfers are included on page twenty-eight in the Report Back.
So just to make sure I understand, the ratio seems to be like fifty-fifty between the money, when we use this money for capital investment versus operational? Is that about right?
When, when we adopted the stormwater utility, it was adopted to manage the city's wet weather program, all of our drainage needs, all of that expense. So when we have staff that go out and clean out storm sewer drains, when we have staff that go out and trim trees because the tree branches fall into the storm sewer system, all of those expenses are incurred here. When we have staff that are collecting and hearing complaints for, or appeals from the public, those costs are incorporated in, in this stormwater utility. The costs of the billing of the system are included in the stormwater utility fund. It's all managing that entire business operation out of this fund. The transfers, the one point four million dollars of transfers are going for three speci, or four specific areas. It's going to cover the pension cost of those employees that are paid for out of the fund. That reduces property taxes that we would have to pay, where normally and traditionally we've paid for that with property taxes, pensions with property taxes. Second, it's going to cover their health care costs, because those employees are entitled to have health care benefits just like every other city employee. So that covers the, the employee share of that. There's a portion of that that's bond and interest expenses that are being transferred over to pay for debt service, for debt that we have issued in prior years. And then there's a three hundred thousand dollar administrative charge back to the general fund that goes to cover all the administrative costs, the cost of the city's, the council's time, the cost of the manager's time, the cost of the finance director and the treasurer's time. All of our administrative funds are all of our administrative expenses. That's the overhead charge that we're charging the stormwater utility, and that's revenue that comes back into the general fund that helps to pay for police officers and firefighters.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. This is the best, I mean, they've been asked that question so many times, and that's the best answer I've ever heard in a long, long time, so thank you very much for your explanation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Finally, the last Report Back is Report Back 115, which was a request to see the two thousand and nineteen fund summary, and that's at the end of the report. That was the adopted two thousand and nineteen fund summary that was included there. There's two pages of it. It ties out to what, it's for comparative sake, to the, the Fund Summary tab on page thirteen and fourteen in the Budget Book for you.
That gets us through the Report Backs. So would you like to have further discussion on the operating side?
Absolutely. If there's any operating questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Why don't we go with operating questions first in terms of the whole budget? Councilman Seer?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I could have permission just to go back one item. I, I just, it was...
It wouldn't be the first time tonight.
I understand, sir. Thank you very much for your patience. On the FOTH report, what's the contract? How much money we spend on, on this contract?
On what?
FOTH report for the garbage there. That number, is that number...
On, on 1-9?
1-15. Is that 1-15?
No, the 1-15 was the, the fund summary? Are you asking about the...
Okay, yeah, it's, okay, I got it in the wrong order here. That's why, I'm sorry. But, so I don't know if I can go back to 1-09, it's just, can I go back to 1-09?
We're still, we're talking in general, so you can do everyone.
So 1-09, can you refresh our memory? How much money we spend on this contract? And since there's been so many changes in the landfill business, are we, is this money well spent on this? well spent on this, these people? Thank you.
You mean our contract with FOTH?
Yes.
Environmental.
Are there recommendations been good? I mean, there's been so many changes now, so I don't know if it's money well spent, basically.
Maybe I'll defer to Assistant Director Lewis to maybe answer that about FOTH. But, we've been, I think, generally, I think the city's, the city staff have been very happy with FOTH and the direction that we've been given with the contracts.
Yeah, I would agree with that. You know, they offer us an expertise that we just won't have here at the city, you know? Some of their, some of their people work with this every day and that's what they do. So, without them, we would be in a bad way, I would say that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
So, questions to the operating budget? And if not, we'll just say and/or capital budget. Just general questions or any changes? I mean, we're, maybe, as the manager, you have the calendar in front of you, just to remind everybody what we're tracking to do here.
So, as a, as a quick reminder, we'll have another budget meeting next week. At that meeting, it's staff's intent to bring forward some of the, on first reading, some of the proposed revenue changes that we have and ordinance changes that we have that are pertinent to the budget. So, those will come forward. We then have, would have the requirement to have a truth and taxation hearing, which we're not going to have because we're not seeing a proposed change in the levy. So, we would continue those operation, or those budget discussions on October 29th. We can certainly then be prepared by November 5th to have all of the budget items on second reading that would be pertaining to adopting the, some of the revenue changes that we may have, the garbage fee, for example, being one of those. And if council is so inclined after the discussion next Tuesday, we can have the appropriation resolution and the levy ordinance and everything ready to go to try and adopt the budget on November 5th, if that's, if that's council's desire. Should there then be a need, we would still have November 12th as a fallback for any need to adopt the budget on November 12th.
Thank you. Councilman Oehler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have a date locked in yet for this Fitch study during this process?
We're looking at probably the 12th of November. We're trying to lock that in with them to see if we can't have them here to give a full presentation to the council.
Any else additional on operating or capital? Okay. Not seeing, Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a very, very general question. A colleague of mine, last October or November, when we were talking about the budget and also the due diligence for the water company, had an idea that, you know, million dollar cost, four years from now, I don't know how many of us will be sitting in these chairs, but somebody made a suggestion last, I think it was October, should we save some money every year, next four years, regardless we're here or not, but somebody will be in these chairs, should we start saving some money in the budget? And I don't know if there's an appetite for that or not. I mean, and we're not talking about buying, no, don't be running too far with, I'm talking about due diligence. So, I don't know if there's an appetite to save some money or we're just going to kick the can down the road four or five years down, for the next option, but I just want to throw it on the table if there's any appetite to have a discussion about that.
Crickets. Mr. Manager, do you have anything else for this one?
No, sir.
We'd entertain a motion to receive and file this evening's information. Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We would be at unfinished business.
Seeing unfinished business to come before the council tonight, unfinished? Seeing none?
We would be at new business.
New business to come before the council, new business, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to first thank the Director, the Community Development Department, I think they put this together, of the City Manager's Office, the Peoria Cares Report. And I want to let, so you know that I do look at this. I'm sure everyone else may look at it or may not, but I do look at this every time we come to council and that it's presented. And every, each time, the item that says excessive growth, private property, is always two or three times, well, yeah, three times or four times more than the, its next leading contender. And so, because it's private property, is there any way, Director Black, to find out if these are properties that are consistently the same properties that are always being reported? Is there any way to find out or do you have any, any sense of what's, what's going on with that, that item?
Councilwoman, in terms of, are you asking if just the reports, just the properties being reported through Peoria Cares can be computed that way or all of the complaints that we receive?
Well, since it's just this report, just those properties that are reported here, is there any way...
I'd be happy to work with, with the Peoria Cares staff in the manager's office to see if we can pull that report together.
Because I know we just went through and we reduced some landlord fees and all that, and that's wonderful. I did not object to that at all, but because I don't believe they should be subsidizing those landlords who own property that are consistently on this list or other people are calling in or we have our proactive mowing going on. And so, sometime in 2020, I would like to see us try to develop some process whereby those repeat offenders, and I don't mean they did it twice or three times, but some of these offenders are doing it consistently throughout the year. If there's any way to make sure that they're paying their own freight and they're not being subsidized by the landlords who are doing the right thing, so that we can hopefully encourage these landlords who are not doing the right thing, or homeowners of that, for that matter, to bring their properties into compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Regenbach next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick things. This coming Thursday is P.CAV's P-Town Soup, so mark your calendars for that. That'll be at the East Bluff Community Center at 6:00. Unfortunately, I have a commitment with my daughter who won an ICC scholarship, so we'll be going to a banquet that night. But, the P-Town Soup is a great thing and it's a great way to support the grassroots organizations trying to make the neighborhood safer. So, I encourage everybody who's available to go to the Community, East Bluff Community Center on Thursday. A couple scary things coming up for the kids. On Friday, the Police Department's hosting trick-or-treating from 5:00 to 7:00 for the kids. And then, here at City Hall on Halloween afternoon itself from 3:00 to 5:00, some of the departments will be passing out treats for the kids as well. So, lots of fun stuff coming up and you've got a sweet tooth Friday at the police station and on Halloween Day here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilman Kelly next.
If anyone saw the paper on Sunday, there was a front-page article that went on in latter pages about the Phoenix Organization opening up homeless, homeless housing right, right down the street here on Madison. This is reminiscent to me of the, of the 30 houses to be built on the East Bluff. These units, this building was already built. This building was remodeled for this purpose, to house homeless people. They broke it up into little apartments, one and two-bedroom apartments. Remember, they're not building this from the ground up. This building already existed. The average cost of these units is $280,000 per unit. $280,000 per unit. This is reminiscent to me of the houses being built on the East Bluff for 380,000, or 300, I'm sorry, $360,000 apiece. Now, we don't have any money at stake. I think we have signatures at stake, but that may or may not be true, Mr. Manager. I don't really know. This is really, really scandalous. We are using people who really need help, homeless people, people of low income, et cetera. They really need help. And we are, somebody is making a fortune off of them, and I think it is a terrible scandal. And all we can say oftentimes is, hey, who cares? It's free money. You know? IDA has given us money and HUD has given us money and all this stuff. And so, not our problem. I guess it's not our fiscal problem, but this seems to me to be a racket. I don't, we have a, we have more housing than we need on the South Side, on the, on the North End, in the East Bluff. We could take some money, fix up some existing housing, give these people a decent place without every other bureaucrat involved becoming wealthy on the backs of these people. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Grab.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Chief Marion, I think that this admonition has been repeatedly issued, certainly at many neighborhood association meetings that we've had in District 2. But, we need to repeat it again, and it's very simple. Chief, what do all people in the city of Peoria need to know that they need to do?
In reference to vehicle burglaries, we're still seeing a trend where individuals are targeting vehicles that are unlocked, so please lock your vehicles. As Councilman Grab said, we've sent out many press releases throughout the year and we're still seeing a trend where cars are still unlocked. And just overnight, last night, we had approximately nine vehicle burglaries, all to unlock vehicles. So, please lock your vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Any additional new business this evening? New business? I'm seeing none. Madam Clerk.
We're at, excuse me, we're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Thank you. Citizens to address, we just need your name for the record. We have a five-minute speaking limit. Linda Wilson is up first.
Good evening, Mayor Artis and city councilmembers. My name is Linda Wilson. I live at 1823 South Idaho in Peoria. Kind of a shame that Ms. Moore just got up to use the bathroom or she probably got up to go for a brief moment because some of my comments are directed towards her because she is, she represents the district that I live in. So, I'm a teacher in the community and I come before you tonight to speak about the current condition of Old Harrison School. And so, in 2010, I believe, Harrison School was replaced by Harrison Community Center and it's directly across the street from the old school. And it's a bad case of two schools. So, on one side of Kraus, you have this beautiful $22 million school. It's equipped with a nice playground, beautiful windows, basketball court, paved sidewalks, well-kept green lawn, and directly across the street is a nightmarish reflection of the past. It's an old decrepit eyesore. It's a monstrosity that haunts the whole neighborhood and it haunts the school that's across the street, the students and the citizens of the community. It's missing windows and doors. It's been deprived of every possible resource that once helped to sustain the building. From a passer's by point of view, it looks as if it were a haunted house, ready for Halloween, 365 days of the year. I live just two blocks from this, these two contradictory buildings. When I leave home daily, I am unfortunately reminded that our South Side community has been undeniably forgotten and forsaken. Old Harrison School is a terrible embarrassment for both our South Side community and our city. So, it was mentioned that it was sold for $10 because our school district was trying to save money by deferring costs for demolition. Although our school is no longer, our school district is probably no longer liable for Old Harrison School, it's our city's responsibility to make sure that its community is safe and well-cared for. The city has defaulted on that responsibility. And please let me know if any citizen that has failed to upkeep their property would not have been fined by now. Would the city not have seized the property, demolished it, billed the owner? And if this repulsive-looking structure were in 61615, would it still be standing? There's not only aesthetic anomalies that are concerned, but there are also health risks. It's a hanger for several environmental risks, along with asbestos that remains in the building, the roof leaks, making it a breeding ground for bats, mold and bacteria. It also has the potential to be a dumping ground for trash and hazardous waste, but most importantly, it could be the headquarters for criminal activity. For example, last year, there was a fire on the second floor stairwell. And although there was minimal damage, imagine if one of our firefighters, who is also my brother, would have been harmed trying to extinguish a fire to look for a possible victim in a very old and unsafe building. This would be a very TIF-worthy project for demolition. For goodness sake, from the Eagleview TIF alone, you're 40% there just about. So, perhaps there are other grants that you can look into for helping to demolish or raise the building. On that space, it could be a green space for children, another park, a community garden. So, I'm just asking that we have some real conversations about this situation. It can be remedied and the citizens of that community are equal citizens of the city and they deserve to be treated with respect and dignity, not just certain parts of the South End of Peoria. That's the deep south end of Peoria and all parts of this city are valuable and every citizen in this, this city deserves to be treated with respect and deserves to have a safe environment and a safe community, all of them.
Up next, we... Up next, we have Stephen Morris.
Good evening, honorable members of this council. Name's Steve Morris, disciple of Jesus Christ, a husband, a father, a five, a pastor and a concerned citizen of this city who earnestly desires the blessings, peace and prosperity of all of our people and institutions in this city, including the ones that we just heard about. In recent weeks, there have been several of us who have come before this council, asking you to establish an ordinance designating Peoria as a sanctuary city for life of the unborn, to stop the ongoing legalized murder of the humans in the womb, and to call for a public day of fasting, prayer and repentance to the Almighty God for our corporate permitting and abetting of this abomination in his sight. This evening, I just... This evening, I just want to take a brief moment to clarify why, as an ambassador of Jesus Christ and His churches in Beor, in Beoria, we're asking this of you. What do private matters of religion and faith have to do with matters of public policies and morals? We would say that they, it has everything to do with them. Because laws govern man and society, and because laws establish, declare, and enforce the boundaries of personal and social justice and morality, right and wrong, legal, illegal, criminal, and so forth, law is therefore inescapably moral and religious, in that it establishes and enforces the ultimate concerns and values of a culture at large and of those in temporal positions of governing authority. To put it bluntly, some person or group's private morality is always going to be publicly imposed on everyone else, and morality derives from a worldview that's based on truth propositions. The more fundamental foundational truth questions are always, by what standard? Or by whose authority? In cultures like ours today, where human autonomy, the right to live as you want to live in pursuit of your own personal happiness, is increasingly valued above all else, it's no surprise, then, that our laws have commensurately evolved to now support this cultural value. Just like cultural idols in the ancient world, our cultural idols, the gods of secular humanism and personal autonomy, always promised that if you sacrificed your children, all will be well. If there's no transcendent God and eternal moral standard that's binding upon all peoples, then all things are permissible, and there's no real rational reason to distinguish the genocide of the Holocaust or the genocide of communism for the genocide of abortion. All are simply examples of the survival of the fittest, of those who have temporal power and authority autonomously pursuing the absolute advancement of their own life, liberty, and pursuit, personal happiness, by systematically usurping the rights to life, liberty, and happiness of those who threaten or hinder their own pursuit of their preferred way of life. And they necessarily codify and justify their morality, the societal morality in their law systems. The Nazis did this by defining Jews as subhuman and legalizing their extermination. The British Empire and the Antebellum South did this by defining Africans as subhuman and legalizing their destruction and enslavement. Today, we do this by defining babies in the womb as subhuman and legalizing their murder. The societal ends justify the means. Nevertheless, an inconvenient truth remains. Despite our current moral confusion and calloused consciences, the living God still reigns unmoved, declaring to all that, "You shall have no other gods before me, and you shall not take the name of the Lord in vain, by honoring Him with our lips while our hearts are far from Him, and by legalizing moral evil." If we state that we are one nation under God, as we did at the beginning tonight, with liberty and justice for all, then that should be that our laws would reflect what God thinks, and that all that should be included would include babies in the womb, too. We are asking you to act in faith. We're asking you to do the right thing. We're asking you to have some moral courage to stand for truth above concerns about reelection. We're asking you to take the living God as He is. He's not an inconsequential philosophy or harmless idea that we can glibly debate or dismiss at the caprice of our will. He is the living King of kings and Lord of lords to whom we will all answer. So that's why we're asking you to establish and honor the Almighty God in truth by establishing Peoria as a sanctuary city for life of the unborn. Proverbs 9 verse 10 says, "The fear of God is the beginning of wisdom." The scriptures tell us that righteousness exalts a city and nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. And so I ask you to help us rescue those who are being taken away to death, hold back those who are stumbling to the slaughter. If you say, behold, did we not know this? Does not he who weighs the hearts perceive it? Does not he who keeps watch over your soul know it? And will he not requite man according to his works? Thank you.
Might be a little hard to follow that, so I'm going to be a little bit eclectic. My name is Joseph Thomas Keck. I am a resident of 529 West High Street. So I guess I ask first, do I have a right as a citizen to ask a question of the city council?
I'll stop the clock. Mr. Keck, it's a, it's a citizens' address, so it's not a back and forth. It's just say whatever you need to say in five minutes.
Well, if I can ask you a question?
It's, you can say whatever, I'll stop the clock. You can say what you want to us, but it's not an engage back and forth. Citizens to address the council. You address us, we listen. That's the format.
Okay, address, yeah, that would be the, the defining word. Okay, well, I will give my four minutes here as a citizen of Peoria, and I encourage all of you, though I do not know how to spell the word, maybe even state it, but emolument, I believe, with the impeachment inquiry of our sitting politician, for those who pay attention, it's important to recognize where public funding goes. So I could talk a long time. I think I'll start first with, with Mr. Mayor Artis, a four-term mayor here. You were on your third term uncontested and got involved with Twitter Gate. And for those of you who are still on the city council, I'm a political science graduate student still. The Department of Peace Resolution, I asked my, my at-large council members and the mayor to pass when a U.S. Congressman Dennis Kucinich was still alive. The Department of Peace would be a wonderful thing to achieve and have people involved in at the city level. Beyond that, I, I was appointed as a, after applying for Chuck Weaver's job, my background in community development and political science, I was appointed to the Peoria Urban Forestry Advisory Board, and I didn't hear a single response from, from any of my elected representatives to ask a question, too. So I'm still working my urban silviculture. I'm looking to the Maharishi University of Management in Fairfield, Iowa, about two and a half hours from here, to kind of compare, contrast the, the small town to the big town in how the republic of, of government of the United States gets done at the good level I, I was taught to believe in. I was born and raised in Illinois. I've only lived out here nine times of my life, or nine months of my life. When I was a candidate for, twice a candidate for, for mayor of Springfield, Illinois, I developed epilepsy from the stress of having been asked by the Democratic Committee to, to be a school board member, but I was divorced by my ex-wife. Now she's on the city council of Springfield, Illinois, and I, I can't quite always know, I've just learned, whether she's just kind of following my legacy of wanting to be a good political science student and bring public accountability to head so that four-term mayors remember, when I stopped in front of you, sir, wanting you to pass a resolution for a Department of Peace, the United States Department of Peace, you had me arrested. Yeah, it's 2006, a long time ago. If I could ask you about it now, we could talk about it, but I'm just allowed to address. So I wish everybody a good autumn. I probably will be back again as I complete my graduate degree, but I didn't prepare my speech. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
We do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment-
We do have a 2C1. 2C1. 2C1 performance.
Appropriate pursuant to section 2C1?
2C1.
And 2C21 if we're going in, so.
2C1, 2C21.
2C1 for planning matters, and 2C21 for the discussion of previously closed minutes.
Okay, thank you. Motion to go into exec by Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilman Euler. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously, and we have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Kelly, seconded by Councilman Grab. Please cast your ballots. And that motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22. This evening's meeting is adjourned.